Good evening. I would like to take this time to call Hibbing City Council reorganization and regular meeting to order. First, we would do our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on to the reorganization meeting, I would just like to tell you how honored I am to be in this position representing the city of Hibbing and to be working with the fine council. I would also like to reach out and thank Mayor Kanata and Councillor Harkinen for the years of service and outstanding dedication that they gave to this community. And I'd like to welcome the new councillors, Chris as a new councillor this year, welcome aboard, and Jay coming back aboard, and then reelection of Mr. Bayless and Mr. Fossil. I'm looking very forward to working with this council and doing some good things for this city. All the councillors are present, so I would like to make a motion, and I will need a second. Designating Acting Mayor for 2023 to act in absence of the mayor when he is not able to be present and perform his duties, I reached out to Justin Fossil for those duties. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Councillor Bayless, a second?
Support.
Councillor Schweberger, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Thank you. I need a motion to designate the Masaba Tribune as our official newspaper for city business, so I would need a motion and a second. Take the motion. Motion, Councillor Whitney, second?
Support.
Support, Councillor Fossil, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Three, I designated depositories for 2023 to Park State Bank, US Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, Security State Bank, National Bank of Commerce, 4M Fund, Wells Fargo Advisors, US Bank Investment Services Incorporated, and Wells Fargo Investment Services. I would need a motion and a second to move forward with those depositories.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, first motion, Councillor Schweberger, second?
Second.
Second, Councillor Bayless, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion and a second to approve the respective depositories designated safekeeping entities. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Schweberger, second?
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To designate Andy Borland of Selman Borland and Simon Law Offices as our City of Hibbing's Attorney for 2023, I would need a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, motion, second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Whitney, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Set the mayor's contingency fund for 2023 at $5,000 as set forth by state law, I would need a motion to appoint?
Motion to approve.
Or to approve, Fossil, second, Councillor Bayless, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We now move on to appointment of councillors to city boards and committees, to the Safety Committee, I would like to appoint Chris Councillor Whitney, could I get a second?
A second.
We have a second from Councillor Bayless, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To the Insurance Committee, I have reached out Jay Hildebrand, Councillor Jay Hildebrand, could I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Motion by Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Schweberger, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have Councillor Representatives Tahida, and I'm Jennifer Hoffmann-Sockman, and Mr. Councillor John Schweberger through their term, could I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Councillor Bayless, motion? Support by Councillor Fossil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Yes.
You also would appoint yourself to that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Tahida, also myself, correct, thank you. So it would be myself as mayor, and Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, and Councillor Schweberger, so could I have a new motion?
Correct, I'll make that motion.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we will move on to appointing the mayor and city engineer as weed inspector and assistant weed inspector for 2023 as set forth by state law, could I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Bayless, second?
Support.
Support by Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City clerk appointment of Sheena Muller as deputy clerk for 2023, could I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councillor Fossil, second please?
Support.
Support by Councillor Schweberger, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's appointment for Aaron Huesman as deputy treasurer for 2023, could I have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman makes a motion, could I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councillor Bayless, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Set the bond for city administrator, city clerk, deputy administrator, treasurer, and finance director for 2023 at $500,000, could I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councillor Fossil, a second?
Support.
Support by Councillor Hildebrand, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Set the regular meetings of the Hibbing City Council for the first and third Wednesdays of each month at 5 o'clock, 5:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers, with exception due to scheduling conflicts, could I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councillor Schweberger, a second?
Support.
Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman is supporting second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to regular meetings, there are two add and deletes, add, department?
Item 13?
Oh, 13, I'm sorry, I skipped that. Set the workshops of the Hibbing City Council following your regular city council meetings, which will be held on the first and third Wednesdays of each month in the city council chamber, with exceptions due to scheduling conflicts, could I have a first motion and a second?
I'll make that motion.
Councillor Bayless makes a motion, second?
Support.
Supported by Councillor Fossil, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Add and deletes, Department and Committee Reports, number 2A, and License and Permits, number 10, and number 11. Could I have an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councillor Fossil, second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Whitney, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to approval of minutes, approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022, regular city council meeting, could I have a motion for approval? Approval?
Motion to approve.
Councillor Schweberger, motion second, Councillor Bayless, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the minutes of December 21st, 2022, city council workshop meeting, could I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councillor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Approve counts payable dated, number 1, 12/30/22, checks number 1/7/3758 through 1/7/3826 in amount of $303,241.45. Checks on 1/4/2023, checks number 1/7/3827 through 1/7/3851 in the amount of $1,687,703.9. Approval payroll for pay period ending for the pay period 12/16/2022, checks number 1/6/8636 through 1/6/8646 in the amount of $582,945.20. Designate the 2023 appointment to the Northeastern Minnesota Emergency Communications Board, ECB, and Northeast Regional Advisory Committee Rack. So we have Regional Advisory Committee to appoint Fire Chief Eric Jankula as the primary and Captain EMS Director Kristi McCormick as the alternate. Could I have a motion? Or should I go all through?
You can go through.
Go through all three, or all of them, all right? Emergency Communication Board, I have reached out to Mr. James Bayless, who has said he would take that role as a primary, and Eric Jankula as the alternate. We move on to radio user community appointment. And Captain EMS Director Kristi McCormick as primary, Commander Jeff Ronchetti as the alternate. Owner and operators committee, Commander Jeff Ronchetti is the primary, Deputy Chief Tyler Swirletzer is the alternate. Authorize the city Hibbing City Council to attend 11th Annual Rock for the Angel Fund Bill on Saturday, February 11th, at the Hibbing, 2023, at the Hibbing Curling Club. Approve to the executive, execute the employment agreement and Amendment A between the city Hibbing and Sheena Muller. Approve to execute the employment agreement between the city of Hibbing and Candy Sepulveda. Authorize the city council benefit changes for 2023. Approve the MOU between the city Hibbing and MAPE to add the positions of library manager and code enforcement technician. Approve the MOU between the city of Hibbing and ASME to modify the base pay for the lead maintenance person to $30 per hour in 2022 effective November 17th, 2022, in response to the job description modifications previously approved by the city council on November 16th, 2022. Authorize the hire of Amanda Bildebrand for the full-time code enforcement technician with the Hibbing Police Department effective January 14th, 2023. Authorize the hire of Kate Wangenbach for the full-time library technician pending successful completion of the pre-employment conditions. Set the next regular Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 18th, 2023 at 5:00 PM at the city council in the Hibbing City Council Chamber. Set the Hibbing City Council Workshop for Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, following the Hibbing City Council Meeting at the City Hall in the North City Council Chambers. Need a motion for approval and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written and published.
Thank you, Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman approves, could I get a second?
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to Department and Committee Reports, we'll start first with City Director Nick Corolla, number eight.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First thing on the agenda here tonight for me is I'm looking for approval to move forward with bar engineering for professional services related to our parks and trail master plan. We started this process back in October, we sent out RFPs for firms to bid on the project, we received nine proposals, we interviewed four firms, and out of the interviews, we selected one, it was a unanimous decision amongst our selection committee, and yeah, we're looking forward to moving forward with bar engineering. They offer a good mix of local knowledge and have a good resume within the Iron Range and the state of Minnesota with some similar master plans that they've completed in the last few years, and then also they're bringing in Ballard and King Associates, which is a national parks and rec firm out of Denver, to work with them and collecting a lot of the data, and you know, the benchmarking of where we're at compared nationally, and that gap analysis, and find out how we compare, and what we can improve on, and where we should allocate our resources going forward in our park system. So with that, I would entertain any questions you may have, but otherwise, we are looking to enter into negotiations with them, we'll bring a final contract forward once we have that, but looking to move forward with bar engineering on this project.
Nick, you're looking at starting this spring, as soon as snow breaks?
Yep, correct. They've, I've got a lot of pictures already of a lot of the parks and things, with bar being local too, they have a lot of knowledge of the system, and they've already started some of the preliminary work that they brought to us during the interview process, they've already started some of that stuff, so yes, but as soon as possible, whenever we get the agreement signed, approved by you guys, we'll move forward with that.
If we have no other questions, I entertain a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to move forward with parks.
We have a motion by Councillor Bayless, could I get a second?
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nick, number two?
Number two, another exciting project in the city services department, we're getting closer and closer to actual groundbreaking for the Mine View Phase 2, which is construction of the two buildings up at Mine View, and we're lucky enough to have Brian Bergstrom from SEH here with us tonight to give a little presentation. I was back here last June or July, asking for approval to move forward with construction documents with SEH, and that's where we're at today. We have the construction documents pretty much finalized with a few tweaks, but looking to move forward with that project as well, and getting it out to bid, and start that project, so I'll hand it off to Brian and let him go through the project a little bit, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity to come in and speak with you again about this very exciting project. You can see we have a 3D rendering of the proposed facility up here on the screen, and I'll just very quickly kind of run through some of the highlights and features of the proposed project, and then certainly answer any questions you may have. The Hibbing Mine View Facility project includes two buildings totaling approximately 3,500 square feet. As you can see, there's a larger building, which is building number two, and the smaller building, we're calling building number one. Building number one includes an exhibit space primarily inside, where there can be display of artifacts and different historical pieces related to the mining operations. There's also a cannibalized outdoor viewing platform on the north side of the building, you can see here on the rendering, which overlooks the mining facility and the mining operations. Building number two, which is the larger facility, also includes some exhibit spaces inside, includes a main reception area and a retail space. Along with that, there is also an outdoor viewing platform similar to what we have on building number one, and you can see they are connected through an elevated walkway structure. The materials for the building, the exterior is intended to be, for the roofing is pre-finished metal, a standing seam metal roof. The wall panels for the exterior cladding is a rain screen, a thin veneered cement panel, so very durable materials that will require very low maintenance and hopefully low cost for maintaining the facility in the long term. The proposed, at this time, the estimate of projected cost, construction cost is approximately $2.2 million, based on our most recent estimate, and the proposed schedule at this time for the project moving forward is a little bit different than what we had, proposed to be a little bit different than what we had in the memo that was in your packet, I believe. Through some discussions just this morning with city staff, there's a few tweaks, a little bit of rework that we want to do to make sure that the project is ready to go, so we're proposing to push the schedule by two weeks, which would mean we would be looking to open bids on February 21st, and bring those bids back to you on March 1st at your regular council meeting for approval, to move forward with construction and enter into an agreement with a proposed contractor at that time. Very quick highlight, overview of the project, but certainly can I answer any questions or entertain any comments you have at this time?
Is this still a three-season building, or could it be four-season?
At this time, the intent is for it to be a three-season facility, however, we are designing the HVAC equipment, so it could be a four-season building if in the future the city still chooses to do that. Did you say a projected completion date? The projected completion date is October 1st of 2023.
Nice. All right, thank you for your presentation, is there any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You bet.
Just looking for approval on moving forward with this.
All right, could I have a motion to approve moving forward with construction bidding documents?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Move on to city attorney, Andy Borland.
Mayor members of the council, I believe it was emailed to you this afternoon, so the council might remember, a few weeks ago, AEOA came to present about a new building that they were going to move into, and they're purchasing that building from Range Development. It came up in the title review that back in 2002, 2003, when they were constructing that building, the city of Hibbing is the ones who conveyed it to Range Development with some contingencies built in, but they needed to, they needed to complete their construction within a certain window of time, otherwise the property would revert to the city of Hibbing. The city of Hibbing actually approved a resolution 17 years ago and executed a deed to transfer this to Range Development. It was delivered to the attorneys for Range Development, but apparently it's been lost and can't be found, and didn't get recorded, which is why it's back in front of you this evening to essentially, by this resolution, ratify what the council did, and authorizing the mayor and the clerk to sign the deed, transferring any interest the city would have in the property to Range Development, so they can close and transferring it to, I believe, AEOA. That's why it's before you this evening, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Andy. With what Andy just said, could I get a motion to move forward with allowing the movement of claim deed from Range Development Company to the new owners?
I'll make that motion.
Motion? Councillor Bayless, supported by Councillor Schweberger, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Mayor.
Moving on to bids and quotes, city engineer, Mr. Starnes.
Mayor, Council, at the last council meeting, the council approved the purchase of a new back truck. What we didn't have on there was the vehicle sales tax on the chassis, so that vehicle sales tax is 6.5% of the cost of the chassis of $145,693, so that gives us a tax of $9,470.05. This brings the total purchase price to $595,305.41, and we did have $600,000 budget for this purchase, so I'm looking for council approval.
Very good, could I have a motion for approval? In a second?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Fossil, a second please?
A second.
Motion by, second by Councillor Bayless, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jesse B.
Mayor, Council, the First Avenue Lift Station is the next lift station on our capital improvement plan. The attached quote is from electric pump for the rehab of this lift station, the quote is for $92,617. This includes all the pumps, VFD pumps, variable frequency drive pumps, all new piping inside the lift station. The next agenda item is for the electrical, but this gives us a total cost of $102,617. We do have $103,000 budgeted for this item, and I'm asking for council approval.
Could I have a motion and approval?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, and a second please?
Second.
Second by Councillor Chris Whitney, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. Jesse C.
Mayor, Council, the next agenda item goes along with that previous one, this is for the electrical upgrade at that lift station, the electrical upgrade is $10,000 from Tronco Electric, and I am asking for council approval.
Could I have a first and a second approval for item C?
Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Councillor Hildebrand makes a motion?
I'll support.
Second by Councillor Schweberger, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D.
Mayor, Council, attaches a quote from North Country GM and Equipment Rental Company for the purchase of a new service truck for the waste collections department. We did have this truck in the budget a few years back, and it got pulled for another purchase. Currently, we do not have a truck with a lift on it to pull pumps at our lift station, so whenever we need to pull a pump, we have to hire a contractor and use their truck. The chassis cost is $50,177.48 from North Country GM, and I'm asking for council approval.
Could I have a motion and a second please?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councillor Fossil, a second?
Support.
Supported by Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E.
Mayor, Council, to go along with that is a quote from Equipment Rental Company for the body for that service truck for the waste collections department. The body cost with the crane, you can see on the quote there, I highlighted the additions we wanted on that, so the body is $49,235. We have a non-skid coating on the bed, a hitch, snowclaw, and we will trade in the new pickup truck box off of that for a $1,600 credit, so the total cost for the body is Total purchase price for this equipment is $107,992.38, and we do have $115,000 budgeted for this equipment, so I'm asking for council approval for the truck box for this piece of equipment.
Very good, could I have a motion for approval? In a second?
So moved.
So moved by Councillor Bayless, a second?
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Hurd is here from the waste treatment plant, and he'll go over this lift pump purchase.
Mr. Mayor, Council, back in October, you guys approved a basic rebuild for our lift pump number six, and we pulled that pump out, and we had it inspected, and there was four things wrong with it, and just a basic rebuild, so it was, it's pretty much, there's like nothing left of it, so they have to do a complete rebuild on that, and the additional cost of that was $9,283.31, and there's about $10,000 to $12,000 more for a whole new pump, for just the bottom end of it, and that had like a five to six month wait time, which I can't do, so the rebuild, I can get that done in four to six weeks, which should be just barely enough time before spring thaw, so I'm looking for approval to allow them to do the work with the additional $9,283.31.
Dave, I do have one question, what is the length of service of these pumps, new versus the rebuilt?
That one was installed in 2004, and the life expectancy should be the same, and they both carry the same warranty on them.
Perfect, thank you. Could I have a motion and approval?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion since it is the least expensive item that's under Jesse's right now.
We have a motion by Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, do we have a second?
I'll support it.
Seconded by Councillor Bayless, could I, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Dave, I appreciate it. Move on to city administrator, Greg Kuzinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. A few things from my office tonight, I would like to start with the Hibbing legislative priorities, so we've talked about our legislative priorities over the last three or so months with the new mayor and city councillors, I'd like to just kind of get real- like to just kind of get realigned. So we have two categories. Primary would be things like our Hibbing Public Safety Center, which will be our, probably one of our top. Local government aid, that's always a big thing for Hibbing, so that'll be a top priority. Fiscal disparities, broadband investments. And then our second category would be secondary. Some of those priorities, we'd be supporting others in their endeavors, writing support letters of support, et cetera. So wanted to just kind of get that in front of the city council, but what I really would like to do is get some direction on considering the local option sales tax. Something we've talked about, again, a month or two ago. A local option sales tax would be something that we could implement here locally. We could use the money for specific purposes, regional purposes, if you will. My thought is if the city council was interested in the local option sales tax, our public safety center would probably be the top priority for us, be a great way to do the funding. However, I do want to point out that local option sales taxes can sometimes be controversial. It is another tax. According to the study that we have, it would be about a 45-55 split, so about 45% of the money that it would generate would come from outside of Hibbing, but that means, of course, the remainder would be from our local folks. So I want to make sure that we point that out. So why on the very first city council meeting with a very new city council would we have this conversation? Simply because we have to have a letter of, a resolution of support by the 31st of January, which we, which means we'd have to do that at the next meeting, which I think is the 18th of January. So maybe that opened it up for some conversation, and then maybe we can pare it down to some direction. Yes, we should maybe pursue it, maybe we shouldn't. So, Mr. Mayor, maybe I'll kick it back to you for that conversation.
All right. I guess I have one question. What I hear you saying is January, every given year, by about the 31st of the first month of the year, you would have to have your intention.
Correct. And there's a pathway to get to where you want to go. So it starts with the conversation here. It start, and then the next step is a resolution. The third step would be we go to the Capitol, we get the, the language drafted for the bill, they sign off on the bill. There's a bunch of stuff in the middle, but, and then what we would do in the fall is we would have to have a referendum for that, for that to come to fruition. So there's multiple steps in there, but it would start with that first resolution going into the hopper, as they say, by the 31st of January.
So you're looking at a resolution put together by our next council meeting?
If that's the desire of the city council, that's exactly what we would do. And I, I would also point out for our residents at home, we did conduct a study. I think it was delivered to us in March of 2022. It looks like it would generate somewhere between $900 and $2 million, depending on how big of a sales tax we would implement, half a cent versus a one cent. So, I mean, there's just a lot of pieces to it. It's a pretty full-blown study. I wasn't going to go verbatim through the study tonight, although I'd be happy to. Sounds like a lot of fun. But again, if there's some additional questions, I'd try to address those.
Right. It's open to the council, yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So Greg, can you change your mind? I mean, we go through and we do the resolution, and then come in the fall, let's say we decide, no, I'm just not ready to do that, implement that at this time. Can you do?
I think the simple answer to that is, we could change our mind. I mean, if we have a lot of feedback from our residents, for example, yeah, we can definitely pump the brakes on that. Which, by the way, I have been socializing it with various groups. Some are in favor of it more than others. It is difficult to have the conversation when it hasn't really been formulated. I mean, there's no specific project we've dedicated it to, but I thought it was a good idea to get it in front of, like, our chamber folks and just start talking about, you know, is this something that you think you'd support?
And I appreciate you bringing it forward. I guess my concern is that people haven't really received their, what their property taxes are going to be, and then we're hearing that it's going to be as high or maybe higher next year. So I think those are things that we need to take into consideration when we're looking at doing something like this, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
No, I'm done. Thank you. No, you're fine.
So what I'm understanding is that the resolution would basically get the ball rolling to, and then the process would start, and the end game would be put up to the voters whether, whether they wanted to implement this or not?
Yep, that's a good summary.
Okay, and from your report that you provided us, it was, if I didn't read it right, like a half a cent tax would be the average of about $35 per resident?
Yeah, this, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Council?
Yes.
This one, this report had the half of a percentage, just kind of as an example. So if you, you know, by looking at it, if you put a full cent or a full cent, yeah, then, I mean, you just double it.
So the average cost, was I reading that right? Was it about $35 to each resident?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And this would just be like a fund, like, like for a public, it doesn't have to be designated for something?
That's a great question, and the short answer is yes. We would have to declare what the project, what the funds would be used for, and the project that we would use the funds for would have to have some sort of a regional impact, which our Public Safety Center would have, because we do a lot of mutual aid when it comes to fire, responding to other communities. Our ambulance service responds to calls in other communities, so there'd be a great tie-in to a regional facility with our public safety facility.
Great, thanks.
Yes, Counselor Fossil?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So ahead of time, we would calculate whether we're going to do the half a cent or a cent. That would be something that would be on the resolution for the voters? Or would that be adjustable afterwards?
No, you have to have it set. So if you're going to go with the one cent, then you have to, that's what you go through with.
And then once this is enacted, you could move it to the next project and continue the tax? So if the safety building, then we complete that project, would it come back to the voters, or did it have an end date?
It has an end date. So basically, you have a project. It, assuming it works its way through the legislature, goes through the referendum process here, we declare what it is. Let's just say it's our public, public safety center. Once that project is done, funded, it times out. If you want to do another project and use local option sales tax dollars for that, you have to go through that same process.
Same process over and over again. Okay. And then, so to be clear, though, this, the sales tax, so say it's at five or half a cent, that would be just money that we would normally be pulling maybe out of a general fund or finding the money somewhere else or a capital fund, instead of just raising it through the sales tax? Is that?
That's correct. So what we would do is what we've done a lot of, remember our annual report? I think we brought in about $7.4 million. What we would do is, if the city council wanted to move it forward, we would leverage all of those different buckets of money for the project, including this one.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is, this would have the potential to maybe lower the burden on the individual taxpayer, like their property tax, because we wouldn't be pulling, adding that to that cost. We would be pulling it from a regional, a 50, what'd we say, 55-45 split, maybe?
Right. We would reduce the burden to our local taxpayers by about 45%, according to our study.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So since we're talking about the public safety building, that has been what, approved, I think, through the House and the Senate, and it's in the governor's bonding, or it was, right? So this is basically a shovel-ready project, correct? Is that what, how you look at this? And that you need this to kind of put it over the top, then? Is that what you're?
So shovel-ready project, you're talking about the Hibbing Public Safety Center?
Yes, yes.
I think maybe the way I would answer that is, it's almost shovel-ready?
Okay.
So not quite. It's not fully funded, because yes, we were in the bonding bill, which didn't get passed during the 22 session. Go to the 23 session, it's a new process, so we'll have to get in the hopper once again with our bonding ask. Assuming that happens, and let's just say that the number for our project is 20 million, we would have the responsibility to produce $10 million for the, for the project. This local option sales tax could be all or a portion of that $10 million that, that it would require to do the project.
And then if it's not, doesn't make it into the hopper, then we could change our mind if we know that we can do that, that we're not going to be able to do this project at this time, and we'd go back and do it next year.
That's a great question. So I think your question is, or your observation would be, we put our bonding ask in the hopper with the legislature, it doesn't get approved or passed, then you could pump the brakes on this funding source. That's correct.
Right, okay.
Or you could implement it as well.
Okay. So for me personally, I'd like more time to really read through it, do more due diligence, that type of a thing. And, and I know that we have our next meeting, but I know we have a working session, but we need to get this passed before January 31st. So I just think that we, personally, I just need to really understand it all before I say, yes, this sounds like a good idea. And if we needed to have a special meeting or whatever we needed to do, so that we don't feel rushed, so that we're all, you know, have an opportunity to check this out, you know, do our due diligence.
I think a special meeting is one of the options that we could use to get to where we need to go. We could also put together our one or two-page executive summary, just kind of laying out the impacts to our local taxpayers with the resolution, and, I mean, you could just take another look at it at the meeting on the 18th. There are a variety of ways we can get to where we need to go.
And I do appreciate bringing it up tonight, so that we have an opportunity to have constituents call us and give us their feedback. We certainly welcome that. So.
I think that's important. I mean, I got a front row seat to this in Itasca County with their new justice center, and it was on the ballot over there with the, the sales tax and everything, and it was quite the topic. If anybody wanted to look back on that and how that's implemented and how that works, I mean, it's a good source material for that, but I definitely think the voters, the custom, or people, citizens need to be well informed on how this is going to get funded and what it's going to cost them, so. Yeah, I agree. I mean, I got the reports today and kind of read through it quick, so, yeah, but yeah, hopefully have more chats about it, I think.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions for the councillors? Greg, do you have anything else?
So yes, I have another, I have two more items. So next item I'd like to cover is snow removal in Hibbing. I know that's become quite the topic of conversation. So I'd like to give a report to the city council, of course, our, our residents, so they hear kind of what's going on behind the scenes, so to speak. So we received a 20-plus inch snowfall. I don't know, it's been at least a couple of weeks ago now. We have struggled with a couple of things. First, the snowfall was preceded by a fair amount of ice, which certainly slowed down our operations when it comes to plowing, graders and trucks getting traction is what I'm referring to. Remember, that was a wet, heavy snow, so it was difficult to push. We've had some mechanical problems. But the point is, is we're trying to get to the end of snow removal. I asked Jesse to put together some information using arithmetic to kind of put into context how much snow we've had to deal with, lane miles and all that fun stuff. So maybe what I'll do is, Jesse, I'll kick it to you, and then you can kind of like give the city council and our residents a little context, and then maybe just open up for some conversation what councillors are hearing and moving forward, what we plan to do.
So Mayor, just for informational purposes, so we have 227 miles of paved roads, 27 miles of alleys, 98 miles of gravel roads that we remove the snow on. That's 352 total miles. For the equipment, we use nine graders, seven dump trucks, four loaders, a loader with a snowgo, two sanders, and various pickup trucks with plows for lift station lots and stuff like that. We pull 18 lane miles to the center. This is in our business district, our own schools, city buildings, and most of our main roads that have sidewalk that is adjacent to the curb and gutter. This last snow, and you can see there's still windrows out there now, the average windrow is about 16 feet wide, six feet high, so it's about three and a half yards of snow per foot of windrow. So we can fill a truck and the truck moves four feet. So that's, just gives you an idea of how much snow is in these windrows. We had, on Howard Street and by the Memorial Building, we did have some windrows that were about 25 feet wide. So you're moving a dump truck about two feet to fill it. So it takes hundreds of trucks to go per block. We have two snowgoes, the primary snowgo, if you recall, the gearbox and the main bearings failed end of November, so we did order those parts. Those will be here about mid-February. Our secondary, and that, that primary snowgo is about eight years old. Our secondary, secondary snowgo, which is 22 years old, this morning failed the main driveshaft. So we, we finished the rest of the day today, removing windrows on Seventh Avenue with two loaders and dump trucks, and that's how we're going to finish. We should be done picking up windrows by about the end of next Wednesday, looking at what we have left. We, we will be talking with the city administrator. We're working on different efficiencies for snow removal. This, it was a, it was a big snowstorm. It was a lot of snow to remove, but, you know, we're looking at maybe pulling less miles. 18 miles is a lot to pull to the center. So we're looking at different areas where we can maybe not pull those to the center, push them to the side. We have been depositing snow on city lots, like the sledding hill between 31st and 37th on First Avenue. It all gets pushed to the side. We're looking at different areas for that. So you got an email earlier about a new snowgo quote, so this would be, this was going to be in our 2024 budget request for a new snowgo. We got a quote today from McQueen. This is for a loader-mounted snowgo. It's a little bit wider than we have, the one we have. It is the same weight. The cost came in at $206,650. With this, we could get this snowgo by the end of January of this year. So they, they have them, they're shipping them out. They sent a couple to Grand Forks, they sent a couple to the UP. So that, that is an option right now. I talked with finance, and we can look, look at budget savings or look, going into our reserves for this purchase. I did ask, we, we cannot lease this. They will not lease this equipment, just because they're going out the door so fast. Everybody wants one of these. So that is an option. So that's just kind of an overview of our snowplow operations, what we, what we do plow. I know it's been, it's only January, what, 4th, and, and we got a big snow, and we've got a lot of questions on snow removal. So if you do have any questions, I'll, I'll try to answer them as best I can.
Just, if you don't mind me asking, what is the timeframe? You're going to, on our older blower, which you can't get parts for anymore, you're going to have to actually have driveshaft built?
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, so what we're looking, they, they started looking for a driveshaft today. They didn't find one. We're probably going to go to a, a fab shop around in town and have a new driveshaft made for the older one. We would keep that one, we, as a spare. The second one, we're looking at the second week in February for those parts. So as it sits between now and the middle of February, we do not have a snowgo to remove snow.
And the purchase of a new blower, which would be good for many years, would be a sooner return on moving snow than waiting for the parts for our newest one we have right now?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions from the council? Yes, Counselor Fossil?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. So you had mentioned, when we're trying to remove the snow from the, from the center, the dump trucks are moving about four feet. Is there any, any way that we could get side dumps in, in those areas instead to maybe go faster?
So for Counselor, for one, we'd need, everybody would need a Class A driver's license, because you need a Class A for a side dump versus a dump truck. Secondly, to get in and out of town with how tight the windrows are right now, you've seen semi stuck in town, that's what we'd kind of be with, with side dumps or even end dumps are brought up. And then when we get to our snow dump... And then when we get to our snow dump, they're kind of tight to turn around in, and we actually, a few times get stuck with dump trucks. So I, we actually have been talking about that for the past couple of years and using a bigger truck. And then you got freezing inside the box. And then we park all of our equipment inside. And we don't have space for, you know, four, five, six side dump semis inside.
Couple more questions, I guess. So you said we had about eighteen miles to pull. I know we've, we've still got some out there. How much do you think we've accomplished as of right now?
For total? I'd say we talked about this before, I, we probably have about six lane miles left, so three miles left out of the eighteen. And we pulled with, with this snow, a lot of these routes, we're not pulling just once and picking up. So Howard Street, First Avenue, we pulled and picked up three times for that, for that one snowfall. Because you go through and there's, there's either vehicles parked on one side, or we plowed it and it snowed eight inches the next day, so we've pulled and picked up those main streets more than one time.
So this information's super helpful, but getting a lot of comments, do you think there, how do you think that we could get this information out to the public faster?
This, all the stuff we talked about tonight?
Yeah.
Well, I can put together a, a document and we can get it on our website.
Right, well, I'm thinking like even just, you know, last week, like updating, like, hey, we're planning on getting to these windrows this week, or this is where we're at, or we expect, like today, hey, we expect it's gonna take us through next Wednesday. So at least the public has an understanding of what's happening, instead of not seeing what's happening.
So we've been working with, is a Northland Alert. We send out, when we do snow removal for, on our priority routes, we've been sending that out, everybody's probably got how many text messages and emails. We're working on that system, it's new to us, we're working on it so we can update different areas of town, if there's a windrow on Twenty-first Street, where we can send it to a, a group of people that's in that area. We're, that's in the works, we're still trying to work that out on how to do that.
Yeah, and then just one last comment, but I, I definitely think it's, there's a lot of value in taking a look at reviewing, you know, where we do pull to the center, because with that, that amount, you know, a lot of places, it would be just completely safer to push it off to the side. Because those windrows, when you have, you know, room only enough for one vehicle to come down the road and somebody's trying to park there, it just creates such a safety issue. Or when people are trying to cross that street, so. If we could look for opportunities to reduce that, which would also help us get it done faster.
Right.
Thanks.
Jesse, are you looking for a motion then? For the two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars, is that what you're, your end result, or what do you mean?
That is not what I am looking for.
Okay, just was wondering.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
City Council. So that's a great question. And I think my standard answer is maybe. So as, as we were talking about our snow removal campaign, talking about equipment, a number of people that we have to do the work, I mean, we just started talking about a lot of different things, one of which was a new snowblower in the twenty-four budget. And because we've started having these mechanical problems, I mean, our, our newest one is fifteen years old. We know the life cycle of this stuff is about fifteen or so years, assuming it's got some decent maintenance. So the whole idea of the conversation tonight was at least to get it on the radar of our city council, number one. Number two, we really wanna talk and give our city coun, or our city residents, I should say, some context of what's going on. So because it's a large capital expenditure that's unbudgeted for twenty-twenty-three, but it is a key element to our operations in the winter, being in the snow belt. I kind of left it to the city council as far as your comfort level on this expenditure. That's a long way of saying, if you're comfortable making a motion, we would appreciate that. If not, we can certainly come back with additional facts and figures for the city council to consider at the meeting on the eighteenth.
Greg, if I may ask, Sheena, could you, could you just elaborate? And Jesse had said he had spoke with you, and I know you spoke with Greg too, the comfort level for our city right now, and as you mentioned, it was in the twenty-four budget anyways. Are we comfortable in a position to move forward with this? I mean, it is about, we are talking about public safety here. And, and we know how many complaints and things we've had. I'm sure all of you have had it, you know, I wasn't even mayor yet and I had a ton of complaints and, and and good, a lot of them were good. They were good complaints, they were logical complaints, and, and, but we had logical reasons why we had issues too, so. Again, financially, are we in a good position to be able to purchase this this year and, and not put us in any situation?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, like Jesse said, it broke on January fourth, which is unfortunate because we're just starting the new budget year, but generally throughout the year, we'll find things as the year progresses, where we'll see where we have cost savings. Right now, I don't think anyone's really gonna commit to me and say they're not gonna buy something yet because they still want to buy it or need it. That's why they budgeted for it in twenty-twenty-three, right? But generally throughout the year, we find cost savings, and then we're also conservative on the revenue side. Where generally throughout the year, we end up finding revenues in places that we didn't anticipate getting. So I guess my recommendation would be, as we go through the year, that if we do this two-hundred-and-six-thousand-dollar purchase, that we monitor that and we find somewhere to do a budget adjustment later on in the year that will cover this. In the event that that doesn't happen, and we don't have a cost savings on expenditures, or we don't come in over on revenues, we do have reserves available that we could look at finding the money from, from prior years as well, so.
So your answer is a combination of? Either or, or combination?
So yeah, I, I don't like buying unbudgeted things, but I think that in this case, this is more of an, it's becoming an emergency or more of a a situation where I think it's an important purchase.
I would certainly, as mayor, recommend a motion. But Mr. Fosso?
I just have one more question. And like, I understand it's super early in the year, so trying to cut something from the budget. But if this was gonna be planned for the, the twenty-twenty-four budget, is there anything that we can highlight at this point that would have a large amount that maybe we could push to the twenty-twenty-four from the twenty-twenty-three? So cut it now if we look at it?
So I talked to Jesse about this today. He really doesn't, other than his infrastructure budget, he doesn't really have anything in capital for streets and alleys much. I think it was forty-one thousand dollars for an attachment or something, so it was not nearly the two oh six. So really, everything else in our capital improvements fund is for another department. So then we'd have to be looking at talking to another department to see if there's something that they're gonna not be spending the money on. But generally, a lot of times, the cost savings actually comes in our general fund, not in our capital improvements fund.
Thank you.
And our savings would occur then in twenty-twenty-four because this would not be budgeted in our capital equipment?
It would unless we decided to keep the levee stable and use it for some other need, but yes.
Okay. Again, I, I would welcome a motion if councillors are comfortable. I do feel public, public safety is, is one of our, it should be our top priority for this community. And it's hard to do that work with, with equipment that's not functioning.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have one, I was dragging on some more, but. If you ever wanted to like put anything together, I would love to get it out because through social media or whatever, because what I get inundated with is, well, why do they plow to the middle of the road? Well, they don't, they bury your car or put it on the sidewalk. Why aren't they plowing? Well, the stuff's broken. Why don't they get new parts? They ordered them, it's coming in. And information like that, I'd love, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, like, if you ever wanted to put weekly reports on why this isn't getting done, maybe I'd be loved, disseminated, because I love, I will defend you guys and stick up for you guys. I just don't like to give information, false information. Like, I think I know what I'm, I know why this happens, but if, if that's something that would be in interest. Okay. Getting the information out to the public, because like, piggybacking on what Commissioner Fosso said, we get a lot of these questions about, well, it's been two weeks, what are they doing? The snowblower's broken, why there were parts that they did, why isn't it fixed? They don't come in probably for two months, supply chain stinks the last year, so. If, is there anything we can do to help get the word out, though? I would definitely. That being said, I mean, snow removable, snow removal and safety in northern Minnesota is a, a top priority, and I would definitely be for making this work.
Thank you, Councillor Whitney, Councillor Hoppins.
Oh, yes, earlier we did designate the Masabi Tribune, and I think we just need to start leaning on them as we, you know, to get help get the word out about this. So Jesse, I'd like to make your, make it easier for you now, that yes, I would entertain and make that motion to support purchasing of the new.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the table from Councillor Hoppins-Hockman, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Councillor Fosso, second sect. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This guy's carrying. Get it ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess, great report. Yes, Administrator Greg?
I have one more item. So what we did in the twenty-twenty-three budget cycle is we put some money away to do some strategic planning. It's a lower cost but high-impact type of activity that we would like to do with our city council staff and city council. So basically, what I would like to do is get it on the calendar, and I had touch base with a consultant to come in and help guide us through that process. I pen, had him pencil in April twenty-sixth, which is the last Wednesday in April. And I'm wondering if the city council would be available on the twenty-sixth of April, later afternoon. Maybe a three or a four o'clock start time.
So you're, you're looking at April, Wednesday, April twenty-sixth for strategic planning for the council?
And it would be a, a retreat type of a scenario. Remember, that would be, it wouldn't qualify to be a closed meeting, so it would be an open meeting, but the point is, is to get it on the calendar and then execute it, so.
Do you need a, I, I don't think you need a
I don't necessarily need, need a motion, just a yea or nay, I guess is maybe the best way to put it.
Okay.
You can let me know if that will work for you, and then I'll put it on the next agenda, so then we have it going forward.
I appreciate reaching out this far in advance, so everyone take a look at their plans.
Did you say April twenty-sixth, Greg?
It'll work for me, I know that.
And I would go to the mayor, that's all I have for my
Thank you, Greg, I appreciate it. Under boards and commissions, we'll move on to boards and commissions. Chisholm Hibbing Airport Authority, one vacancy for three-year term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-twenty-five for Hibbing resident. The applicant is Michael Purlo. Could I have a motion, since we just have one applicant?
So move. I'll make the motion.
Motion from Councillor Bayless, a second?
I'll support that.
Councillor Fosso, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to abstain.
We have one abstain, and opposed? Motion carries. License, we'll move on to license and permits. Approve the twenty-twenty-three on-sale Sunday liquor license renewals pending current taxes, utilities, insurance. Motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have motion approval from Councillor Bayless, second?
Support.
Councillor Fosso supports, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion, opposed, motion carries. Approve the twenty-twenty-three off-sale liquor license renewals pending current taxes, utilities, and insurance, number two. Motion for approval. Councillor Fosso approves, second?
I'll support.
Councillor Bayless, seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number three. Approve the twenty-twenty-three off-sale brew pub license renewals pending current taxes, utilities, and insurance. Motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion approval, Councillor Hoppins-Hockman, second? Support, support by Councillor Whitney, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, approve the twenty-twenty-three wine and off-sale liquor license renewals pending current taxes, utilities, and insurance. Could I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Councillor Bayless, second?
I'll support that.
Councillor Fosso, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, approve the twenty-twenty-three club on on-sale liquor license renewals pending current taxes, utilities, and insurance. Could I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Swyberger, second?
Support.
Support by Councillor Hildebrand, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve twenty-twenty-three three-point-two beer on lick, sale liquor license renewals pending current tax, utilities, and insurance. Could I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councillor Fosso?
Support.
Supported by Councillor Hoppins-Hockman, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the bingo permit application request of the Hibbing Little League to host their bingo events at the Elks Lodge on Wednesday in February, February first, eight fifteenth and twenty-second of twenty-twenty-three. Could I have a first motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Councillor Bayless, a second?
Support.
Support by Councillor Swyberger, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bingo permit, number, well, that is also part of seven? Okay. So there was also bingo, bingo permit with that, number twenty twenty-three oh one dash oh one. We should include that, so could we have a motion to include that?
It's all included.
It would all include, okay, very good. Number eight, approve the raffle permit application request of the Angel Fund to hold a raffle at the Hibbing Curling Club on Saturday, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. Could I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councillor Hoppins-Hockman, second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Bayless, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Approved? Approved, what's the word I'm looking for here?
Opposed?
Opposed, there we go. Opposed, motion carries. And that included the raffle permit also, approve the special event permit application of Jason Huestead to hold twenty-twenty-three vintage iron on the Range Snowball Ride to be held at Palmer's Tavern on Saturday, February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Could I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Councillor Swyberger, second?
I'll second.
Second from Councillor Bayless, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Curling Club to hold a raffle on Saturday, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-three at the Hibbing Curling Club. Could I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have Councillor Hoppins-Hockman, motion, second?
I'll support.
Councillor Bayless supports, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That included raffle permit number twenty twenty-three dash oh one dash oh two. Number eleven, approve the massage therapy license of Sarah Garnas of Balance Massage and Aesthetics at eleven oh one East Thirty-seventh Street, Suite eleven. Could I have a motion for improvement?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councillor Swyberger, second?
Support.
Supported by Councillor Fosso, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that included massage permit twenty twenty-three dash oh one dash oh one. Let's take it to the end of our council meeting. Could I have a motion for adjournment, if nobody has anything else?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
We have a motion adjourned by Councillor Hildebrand, second?
I'll support.
Supported by Councillor Bayless. Meeting is adjourned.